So the recording started. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. Just want to make an announcement that the meeting is being recorded. So first off, I would like to start, well, first of all, welcome back, everybody. First meeting of the school year. And I would just like to welcome some new folks we have joining us. And we're so happy to have everybody here. So we have John Barth, who is our new high school principal. So welcome, John, and Sarah Taitra, our new HR manager. Sarah and Justin, he's been to a lot of our meetings, but now he's in the hot seat as the director of technology. So welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
So, um, I don't know, those of you who might remember from our last meeting in June, we had a discussion about the manifest. We're gonna do a new thing and see how it works out. We start off with review of the manifest. Years ago, we used to pass the manifest around as the board meeting was going on. And we would look at it and sign it. And then when COVID happened and, you know, we, nobody knew if it was safe to pass papers and things around in the beginning, it would go in the other room and we would come early to do it before the board meeting just to sign it. So we're kind of doing it sort of like the selectmen do it where it just, we start the meeting with a review of the manifest. Then each of us would pass it down, look at it, sign it, and then we can ask any questions. Because the meeting is now called to order, we can ask any questions about it. So Julia, so we should have the manifest. The right-hand part is the sections with, you know, with the little tabs to sign. The left-hand stack, Maria put the, like, information back up. She has a little index there, a little index, an index. So, um, so that'll be how we start. All right, I haven't been to tons of select meetings when they do this. So it's just this meeting is just passed down.
Yeah, they usually get the, they usually get the manifest emailed to them ahead of time. So they've already had a chance to look through it. And then what they'll do is they'll make a motion to accept the manifest. And motion in a second. And then during what we would normally do, discussion, they look through it, they ask any questions if they have it. You know, they've had a preview of it. So I think ours will probably take a little bit longer, but, you know, it's same essentially, the same thing.
Okay, yeah, so basically, so we're just being passed down. I mean, the meeting's in progress, so, you know, we can chit chat. Don't let's probably chit chat too much, but, um, yeah. We can chit chat, but yeah.
No chit chat.
No chit, no. Would having it emailed ahead of time be something that you guys would be interested in? So then it would still need to get signed, but you could come prepared with any?
We could come prepared with questions.
Do you see a problem with emailing it? I mean, I know, so I'm gonna do it, but we have different kind of materials.
I don't, I think I could email you the manifest. I think that one of the reasons this is so big this time is because we didn't have a meeting in July. So you're seeing things from, from the end of June through the middle of August. Normally, it won't be like this size. But I'd be happy to email it to you. It might be, it might be the day of the meeting, though, because usually we're doing it.
Well, so then it might not be worth it, because I know I don't check my email. You know, I'm at work, so.
But we can, we can try to get it earlier. For the next few weeks are gonna be a little rocky for us, but.
I think, you know, don't worry. Honestly, don't worry too much about it. We'll see how this goes and then. She'll be here. And she can look at the manifest even after if she wants it. We will don't, because we don't have a form signing it.
On this one, it still has Kamala Hemmle on this process.
Yeah, otherwise it would be forgery. We'll probably get started a little bit even earlier than 6:15 now, so isn't that nice? If April wants to take a look at it, I mean, she could do it afterwards, I think, rather than, yeah, since we have a form signing it. Yeah, it would be great. Yeah, I remember, because that's how it used to be back in the day in select meetings. And you'd kind of be like, huh. No, that's not true. Always exciting. Say that sound, I like that. Of the most yourself, of the most trust the most yourselves. Yeah. That's all right. We're just trying our new manifest signing procedure. We were just talking about having that emailed to us. The selectmen have gone to that, to having it emailed. So then they come with their question, so. So we're talking about that for the next one. But so for, I, if it's all right with you, Jody has yours. Form of this, of us excited, so then you can look at it after. But I have it here for you, because I like it. People out on Zoom are probably thinking like their, their sound isn't working.
This isn't what they usually do.
What's going on? I don't like silence. I got a question. Like silence. All righty. Thank you for bearing with us, you know, it's a work in progress. So, thank you, Jody.
So we're always at the manifest.
Yep, so we don't really need to make motions. Yeah, so we're also at the manifest.
If I can jump in a little bit before we do the approval of the minutes. Our board packets this month had a document that should be a non-public. And that is the application, the safety grant application. I would like to make a motion that immediately be taken out and moved into non-public, please.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor of moving the document for the safety grant application to non-public section, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstaining? Now, the emergency operations plan, Wayne and I talked today that that should be on public. Do you want to do the same thing with that document?
Make that same motion.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of moving the emergency operation plan document to non-public, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstaining? Great, thank you. All right, so, next up, we're to start. We just need a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of June 8th and the public minutes of June 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second, yeah, any discussion or corrections?
I have an addition that I would like on the public minutes of July 14th. That was our goal setting and we were having a discussion of a matter of a bill payment and of. In the handbooks. I had questioned whether those were actually topics for a board discussion or whether those were admin discussions. So I would like that, you know, it's somewhere in there. Just that I raised that question, please.
So just like, after that, it was part of that second paragraph there, just that Sean questioned if the discussion or the topic was.
And then discussion was had.
Yeah, admin or board discussion, for a board discussion, the discussion was had. That make sense, Maria?
Just a 7:14, right? In the second paragraph?
Yeah, so like where the board just, the question, we had gotten a question from the administration regarding bringing up handbooks, that paragraph. So just, you know, add it on to there, because he had questioned, or maybe the second session, wherever you want it.
It doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, just somewhere in that section.
As long as it's noted somewhere.
Yeah, he wants to note it, that he questioned if it was a topic for board discussion or an administration decision.
Okay, all right. So I have a sentence.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Anything else, any other additions or corrections or anything? No, okay, so then, um, all those in favor of approving the minutes? I guess we could just say as amended, or do we, as amended, we don't want to do that one separately. No, it's fine. Okay, so those minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Thank you. Next up, first up, okay, so it's the update on the COVID items.
So quickly, we ended the year with about 246 confirmed cases of COVID. We did have a couple over the summer, summer school. We've gone from about 5% of the cases being the VA5 to about 85%. And I think the big news of the day is the CDC put out new guidance for opening of schools on the 11th. So I know the CDC has been under scrutiny recently about the kind of fuzziness of their messaging. And I'd like to say this is better, but I don't think I can. So what they've gone to is a low, medium, high. But the metric by which you determine low, medium, high transmission in the community is very complicated. It includes number of hospital beds that are available currently in Cheshire County. About 5% of the hospital beds are used for COVID cases. 18 people are in, so I don't know how that translates. But there are circumstances, whereas, let's say, we had a flu outbreak. Now, all of a sudden, the beds are full and therefore the metric by which they would determine low, medium, high will change. So that's gonna be a lot of fluidity as we move forward. We plan to meet Tuesday with the nurses, Joe, John, Maria, myself, and try to clear some messaging, get to the communications committee on board and sort of get something out to the community. Long story short, masking is, if we enter high transmission, currently we're medium based on that metric, then we recommend masking, but we're not there, I don't think we'll get there soon. Approving is no longer required to the cohort idea. They are still sticking to every day, cleaning the services. They're reminding everybody handwashing, and if you can't hand wash, the alcohol or some kind of sanitized liquid. They are reminding people that some distancing is probably a good idea, because colds and flu and COVID and everything. But it's not part of the plan. So it basically is, school opens as usual. Of course, you don't have a quarantine if somebody's exposed, that's not part of this new guidance. So we'll go through all of this guidance. We'll get something out next week in time to get to parents. Currently, we're in a pretty good place in Cheshire County. But we all know how fast that can change. Each variant is a little more contagious than the past one. They're obviously, they're outcompeting the previous variant. So a lot of things can happen, but I don't see variants becoming more deadly because of the previous exposure people have had to COVID variants, vaccines. And over half of our people probably have had COVID at this point. So I think it's gonna be an opening that resembles a 2019 opening, more so than a 2021, 2020 opening. So I think, I think we're in a decent place, but we're gonna have to be cautious.
Does anybody have any questions for Wayne? I just want to point out, and if everybody gets the message from the NHSBA, so they sent out the guidelines. So just like you said, the 11th or maybe it was earlier this week, they sent it out. So if you want to check them out.
It seems like the CDC guidelines don't mesh with the, with the New Hampshire state guidelines. Do you know what I mean? It seems that they're in conflict.
And that's not a surprise. Yeah, that's kind of gone on the whole time. But, yeah, I didn't check out too much, the New Hampshire one, because I just created it. But, um, yeah, so, but Wayne and the admin and the nurses and stuff will be digging into it. And, and then get something, we can follow, you know, Ben touched with me and then Sean, we can follow the communication plan. And we can get stuff written up and out to parents before the 30th.
Succinct and, you know, so that people want to kind of keep reading instead of, we get into that document.
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Yeah, that'll put you to sleep. Man, do we have extra copies of that CDC guidance? If we want to put them out there at the end, so if anybody in the audience wants one on their way out, so. The amount we, you didn't know if the board, you didn't make copies.
No, I just printed it off my own from the, from the NHSBA email.
Why not, I have it on my computer.
Yeah.
So anybody who wants one, we'll just leave it at the end, they'll be copies.
I mean, I don't know, maybe, once the guidance goes out, we, you know, when we post it, we could post the link to the CDC, like, right along with it then, too. So, so it's out there. All right, thank you. Anyone have any other questions? Okay, next up, um, so on, and there was a little bit of a mix up on the, the public agenda. So all of us on our agendas, for the second item, we have discussion of draft mission statement. It's not, wasn't on the posted agendas, but, um, so if it's okay with everybody, if we, I'd just like to add that, you know, back in, we would have that discussion. So, so like I said, the next side of it was the discussion of the draft mission statement. So, um, as we know, we, the board met in July and came up with a vision statement and a draft visions, vision statement, which we, you know, there's a new thing for us, we decided to go, kind of change it up a little bit. We used to do goals, but, so we did our goals, our draft goals, and we did a draft mission, vision statement. And then we wanted the administration then to get together and do a draft mission statement. And I kind of laid out a little detail in the minutes. And then we would get together in September in a joint meeting and kind of put it all together. And everything's a draft, working it all together. So, um, so they've, they've included in the packet a draft mission statement. I know Sean had a spearheaded the whole, he had it laid out very well, so I don't know.
Sure.
We have any thoughts?
So the draft mission statement this year is actually a revision of the draft, the vision statement, because this isn't the mission statement. So we should kind of probably get in the habit of using the right terms, just because it's gonna be easier for everyone to follow. So I'm assuming, and I guess I can ask you, I'm assuming this is the, what the administration would like to edit the vision statement, too?
So, I guess maybe we have a misunderstanding coming this, the mission statements, if you go around other districts, I think that's re-representative. But the group that put it together, Joe, John, myself, Sarah Williams, Patty, Maria, I think you're, remember Justin. Or anyway, put it together quickly as a draft. We proved it this morning as a draft. So we can, we thought we would drill down when we meet with the board and go through goals. We also kind of went through and put some basic draft goal language together for district goals. So we have that. But I think the people in that group felt it was pretty representative of the mission statements they've worked with. Certainly, it's representative of the mission statements I've worked with. But maybe there's something more to it, maybe there's a best practice change, kind of, you know, looking at things I did many years ago. We can certainly do that when we meet as a board and kind of go right through it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah. And then one of the things we were saying when we, when we met the board and you, you know, the mission statement with steps to, like, support and achieve the vision. So I think that that's what we'll work on, it sounds like, when we get together. And you already have drafted some goals, so we can work on that.
So the, we have the strategic goals and groups that are designed to put together the tactical goals, which then drilled all the way down to the PLC groups. And they include outcomes, how you know you made progress, when that progress is expected, who the point people are. There's a lot to that, and we can go through all of that.
Are you saying that's at the September 4th meeting? No, we, we remember, we talked about finding a meeting time, another time, I think September, maybe October, if we want, if September gets too busy. But where the administration and the board would get together and put together the mission, vision, our goals, their goals, kind of, you have to make it all one thing, so.
I think, because I do have questions. However, I think that when we had our goal-setting session, we, I think we kind of took a, I, I, we did it differently than any of the other goal-setting sessions that we've done since I was on the board. And we talked through quite a bit of, quite a bit of it, right? As far as why we wanted something a certain way, why we did other things a different way, and blah, blah, blah. So I don't think the administration had the benefit of our, of our rationale. So I think it would probably be better to talk more about it when we all get together. Because otherwise, I'm gonna be talking about stuff that it's just not fair, you know what I mean? So I think it would be more collaborative if we dig deeper into it when we get to our joint session. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yeah. So anybody else have any, any other comments about that process? I mean, the admin, do they follow kind of what we're saying? I mean, without being in our goal-setting session in July, you know, it was.
It was hard, because we were, because we were second guessing each other, too, like, we.
Mission, vision, we kept going back and forth, and what is what?
Really drilled down what each other was saying, you know what I mean? And like, what do you mean by that? How do you support that? How do you do this? How do you do that? So we really dug down deep and it was, it's, it was a very different process, like I said, than we've done, we've done before. So I think that, I think without having been there, I think something gets lost in the translation, you know what I mean?
Yeah. So Wayne, what do you think? I know we have a lot of admins to work in and, you know, maybe everybody, if they have their calendars or not. But, you know, what works best for us and, and you guys, you know, definitely the board will find out what dates work best and see what then works with you guys.
I think for us, typically Wednesday is a day historically, we carve it out as a technical meeting. So, I mean, if you've got, you know, pottery club is probably not on a Wednesday until Tuesday. I think the admin typically tries to keep that day.
Yeah, so do we want to do it in August? I mean, I know the next two weeks in August are probably so easy for you guys. But, um, yeah, no, the next two weeks are gonna be crazy. Yes, or September, or even, I mean, I don't want to push too much if it's the goals and this, everything to start the year. But, um, whatever would work, we have our board meeting on the 14th.
I'm in Orlando the 7th. I'm having surgery on the 16th, so I probably won't be doing the 21st, but I can do the 28th, maybe.
Okay, I mean, that's sticking to a Wednesday, if you want to, if you.
Right.
Could make it a little more, but what do you guys think?
I mean, I'm open any Wednesday, so.
Yeah, so.
I have meetings every Wednesdays. I have meetings Wednesdays, it doesn't matter.
Well, I mean.
Tuesdays are better, Thursdays are better.
So, yeah, and Tuesdays, what do you guys, how are you on? I know Tuesday doesn't work, because you.
But I could do the 27th.
I could do the 27th or the 28th.
I'm completely flexible, so don't even mind.
Julie has a hard time mid-week anyway, so.
Mid-week is a challenge for me, but we can figure it out, work around it.
Would the, would the 27th be better, or, which is better, the 27th or the 28th?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter for you, for that?
For that week.
For that week, oh, okay. So then maybe we, if we can, if it works for you, Julia, we stick with the 28th, stick with the Wednesday? If that's one of the Wednesdays, it's okay for you. And then, I mean, I, I, we could ask everybody to go down your calendars, but I don't know if we want to spend the time for that, or if you guys can just let Wayne know, and who could be there, can be there. And does that sound okay, Wayne? I don't know that way. All right, so Wednesday, September 28th, we'll have our joint, say, goal-setting, you know, it's really, kind of really not goal-setting, but, but, you know, with the admins, 6 o'clock. I was gonna say, what time's best, 6 o'clock, work for everybody?
So we're not making comments on the mission statement right now.
Not right now, yeah. And thank you guys for meeting and doing this and me, and doing, you know, you said you have some draft goals. So I, that'll be great for when we get together and, um, and can just put it all together. Um, so next up is superintendent search, so, um. So, um, you know, the documents are still saying the public packet, but we're going to have that discussion in non-public. You know, about the two firms and which one to contract with. And then also the, the people who, you know, have expressed interest in serving on the search committee. So we want to have that discussion in a, in non-public. Yeah, so that one's going to be in non-public. So the public meeting's probably going to be a little short tonight, but then the non-public, all you lucky people will get to be in there with us. Okay, we already moved the security application. So next up, student representative report. So Wayne and John, I think, probably, we talked about that, right?
No, I don't have an email because we have to get, we haven't had students here.
Yeah.
So that's on the first day of school, asking students that are interested in being on the board. And then why I look at the RSA, what I'm calling it, is that it should be voted on by the student body. And so what I'm looking at doing is whoever's interested, and then go on the Pacer News to kind of speed up the process. They can do a quick, you know, speech on why they want to be a board representative, and then we can vote during lunches. And it's open to any grade, high school, middle school. I prefer more somebody upperclass.
Yeah.
But, so that's the process we're getting for it. And so you'll have somebody for the September 4th.
All right, awesome. Do they have any questions for John? I just have one question, but anybody else? So in the past.
Just add, Holly, that the RSA does say that they don't put it on public, they don't vote, but they have all the other.
All their rights of discussion and everything, yeah. And they would get the public packet, I assume, too, ahead of time. In the past, like, way back, when Ed Patner was on the board, he was, he was, it just graduated a few years before. So we had like a 23-year-old board member, and back in 2010. And he brought this to us. So we've had a student board member until COVID and whatever. But the way we did it was, and and I think the intent of the law, from my discussions when I was at the School Board Association, I, there was some discussion about it. In this new law is that they are there for most of the meeting, you know, being a, listening to discussion and whatever. The way we kind of, every once in a while, we would have students who stayed, like years ago, they would stay. But in recent years, it was they come, give a report and leave. And I, so that would be something to just think about, that we think the intent of the law is to be more substantial than have it had been done. So just, I just want to make sure if you agree with that, that, you know, so if I'm not crazy, you're on the wrong page with that, but, you know.
Yeah, so my experience is, yeah, it was that the student rep would give a board report, what's kind of going on in the school. But the current, you know, intent is more student voice.
Yeah, student, yes.
They should be there, and that's one of the commitments they have to make. You know, I know, like, upperclassmen are busy, they have work, things like that. But they really need to make a commitment to this process, so.
Yeah, they only bring it up because if they're used to how it used to be, and now all of a sudden, it's like.
It looks to me like that member should be sitting with us.
They'd be sitting right there.
Participating, not just come, give the report and go. Like participate the whole.
Do you remember years ago, Melanie, she would stay for the whole meeting until non-public. It'd be late, and she'd be like, you can really go, Melanie. She's like, oh, no, this is interesting. Yeah. All right, awesome. So, yeah, so that, that, but I just wanted to bring it up because that's definitely a departure from what they would be used to, so. Cool, well, thank you for spearheading that, and that sounds great. All right, thanks so much. This, we're at number six already. So next up is the lunch prices. Jody?
So at this point, we're not, I'm not advocating for any change in the lunch prices. The current is for students, for breakfast is full price, is a dollar fifty. For reduced, it's thirty cents. For adults, it's two dollars. And for lunch, it's three dollars for students, full price, forty cents for reduced, and four seventy-five for adults. It, we have money in the account from last year where the federal government was reimbursing us more money than it was costing us in food. So the theory is then that we should be able to use some of that money. They want us to use it for some, like, supplies, for kitchen supplies. But I think that we can also use it for feeding children.
Yeah, talks, yeah.
So I feel that 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 money is there to offset, so that I don't think we need to raise prices this year.
Cool. Yeah, any comments or questions?
I, from our last discussion about lunches and the application process and whatnot, this, I'm still a little confused, sorry.
No, that's, it's confusing.
So the, so the first, so if they had not, so people who came into the school when it was free lunch have never signed any paperwork for free lunch, reduced, whatever. So those people, have they gotten information? I know that I got my packet today.
So they're in the packets. They went in. Erica's, we're working really hard on it. Everybody's trying to get it out. The, there's a new rule in place that if you were free and reduced for the 1920 year. And you didn't fall off, even if you didn't apply. So if it's for the 1920, for the 2021, but for the 2122, if you fall into any of those categories and did not fall off, you will be free or reduced for the first 30 days of this year. So there being a little bit.
So if they had applied before.
Right.
So my concern is that people who are going to be, but have not applied, because they're new to the school from when we were free and we were free lunches.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Like, those people, are those people going to be covered for the first?
If, if they are getting certain aid, we run a report, Justin sends me a list of of students, which we interface with the DOE. And it comes back and it tells us who qualifies for free and reduced. Those people will qualify for free and reduced. So we've done everything we can.
To contact those people?
Well, those people will be free and reduced to start with.
To start with, even if they haven't.
Even if they haven't applied. If they are getting certain benefits, they will qualify for free and reduced.
So they're pre-qualified, basically.
Right, okay, right.
So my thought process was if they get the, because I know we can apply for the applications through the portal now through Power School, yes?
We can apply through the, through Titan, which is the food service. Um, we've not, I know that in discussions with Erica is she really prefers to use the paper version. And part of that came through a discussion that we had when the state was out auditing our summer food program. We talked to them about the free and reduced, and she was aware, we talked to Patty Carrigan, she was aware of the Titan situation. And she said she really strongly urged that Erica recalculate it all manually at any rate, even if we do use the online version. So we're going to accept either one, but we will be recalculating it regardless.
So I was wondering if they applied, if they applied before school started, if they were going to be. So basically, we can guarantee anybody that is, that needs to be free and reduced will be free and reduced the first month? Kind of, we're going to do our best.
Yeah. So that's, that's the goal, we want those.
So then my question becomes, if the first month, somebody has put in application, they're going to be free and reduced or whatever. But they're not covered for that first month, are we covering them for that first month?
Well, that's a, that's a question.
That's my thought process.
Right, so that's a good question for you. So I can tell you that we are coming into this year with no meals balances. And because the, the work that we did in April, when we went to the Titan, we had a few people who owed some money at the end of last year. We were able to deal with it. So no one owes us any money right now, which I don't think ever happened. So it's pretty exciting. It's pretty exciting. So my personal recommendation would be that, yes, we, we forgive those, what I think will end up being fairly modest.
Right, that's my thought process.
But that's something that you would need to direct me on.
Right.
So, but yes, thinking alike, I think.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So well, so.
And we can cross that bridge when we know the numbers.
Yeah, so like, like next month, we could, or even.
Well, probably not till October.
True, I could get through that first, yeah. Okay, so you could just feed them, and then we'll sort it out in October. Yeah, we'll make the motion and all that in October, yeah.
That's what we care about. And I don't want to put the burden on the parents, if they're going to be free and reduced, you know, like, I don't want to burden somebody who doesn't need to be burdened already.
Right, right. But I, I know Erica's doing everything she can to reach everyone she can, but she really is, so.
Well, thank her for, on behalf of us, definitely for all that. Does anybody have any other questions about the thank you for bringing, bringing that up? So we're not changing the price, so we don't have to take any action? I mean, you don't have to vote to say we're not going to change it, or what would you like to do?
Ordinarily, you make a motion, set price.
Oh, to set, oh, because we're still setting it for this year. Okay.
I'll make that motion, stay with last year's rates.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or staying? Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, so emergency operations plan is going to non-public. So next up, we have a letter from Catherine Lynch from the town requesting the use of our van for the outdoor hen's tail program on September 17th. Anyway, you, you don't have to wait for me, you guys, I know what it says. So you guys can discuss. Does anybody have any questions about it? It's the same, same one that we, we get from them every year, and, you know. Yeah, we've never had any issues, and it's a great program that, that they, they do, so. I move that we approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the request to use the van for outdoor hen's tail, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great, thank you. All right, next up, we have, we didn't put any other, like, policy first readings or anything this month, but we have a policy review. So I've been talking to Wayne, and I was talking to John, and about the cell phone policy. John had some ideas about, you know, try, trying to try some things with it and see how it goes. And then bringing it like an updated one to us for first reading next month as well, after, so, John.
Sure, so cellphone policies and managing it are extremely difficult. But I definitely understand that cell phones should not be in the classroom unless it's for academic first purposes. But what I'd like to do with the student body, and this would be one of the first things when I meet with the classes on the first day, is during passing time and during lunch, they could use their cell phones. And we would see how well that goes. They still need to arrive at class on time. They cannot give teachers a hard time, you know, if they're all of a sudden walking in, and I've got my cell phone, oh, give me one more minute. But this is to see, give them a chance to see how responsible they can be. And then we revisit it, I would say, probably the October board meeting, I can give you some data where we're at, from, you know, referrals on cell phones and things such as that, from Power School. You know, it's a, it's a part of life. I, I, I don't know, I'm up, you know, but it's a very difficult thing to manage. And I, I will tell you, during the pandemic, I was thankful that kids could use cell phones because I had to be six feet apart from my friend. But it really was difficult to talk with them, and so they did use cell phones. I'm not a total favor of it, because then they're isolating themselves and doing face to face. But I would like to give the students that opportunity and a chance with your support.
So any questions to promise?
So basically, what we would need to do is we would need to give, you would need to give permission to have leeway on the existing policy in preparation for potential policy revision.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be the way to.
All right, so let, so let, we're going to wait to see.
I have a question first. What's the history with the problem with cell phones?
As far as like classroom missions?
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to ask about how, what kind of an issue has this been?
This?
Yeah.
While you're trying to teach? That's been a pretty big one. It's always seems, I won't say always, but it's a lot of repeat offenders. So we've had the, I had to implement the, the third offense two or three times last year, where we hung, where we hung on to, to the end of the year. It's a lot of teachers taking responsibility, they'll confiscate the phone in the classroom, they might hang on to it, and I might never hear about it. That's happened once or twice. But if it's a repeat offender, they'll take it, bring it straight to me, and we hang on to it to the end of the day. So it has been there. More, I'll say probably the vast majority have been in the lunchroom. It's little onesies and twosies in the classrooms and every now and then in a hallway. It's hard to catch in a hallway with so many bodies moving all at once. So, I mean, that's, that's pretty much the rundown that I've witnessed last year.
Any other questions, comments? I know, I just, and my, my only part, piece of it, my only comment is that, so, you know, and as John said, not in the classroom. And, and every staff member needs to enforce it, like, not in the classroom, not, I do it in this room, but I don't do it in these three rooms. You know what I mean? Like, it really, because then you're, you're not getting, you enforce it in the classroom, and then they have a leeway in the other places. And, yeah, like, right now, our policy is it's in your locker in the morning, and it doesn't come out. We all know that, that doesn't work. So this is way, like, more, this is very much more realistic. Yeah. So, yeah, that would be our, my only thing is.
And John and I, we have spoken about this to, pretty in depth, and we are considering that study hall is a classroom. So they would not be.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, because there's purpose by, by study hall. It's not to be on your cell phone, so.
Yeah.
It's purely lunch and in passing time.
And I have heard that sometimes, you know, some teachers will let kids, if they're, you know, working quietly, like, listen to music. I, I mean, I don't know what you, what that, if that needs to be spelled out, like, it's a no classroom, maybe, no, you said for educational purposes, so.
I mean, I've seen cell phones, definitely for educational purposes, you know? Sometimes it's just a simple use of a calculator, but that still has to be, you know, teacher permission.
Okay, yeah.
And they have, they have Chromebooks, too, so.
Yeah.
You know, which are difficult to match, or not Chromebooks, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Devices.
Yeah, so I said that part would be like you guys tweaking it, working with it, and, right, coming back. Yeah, we wouldn't micromanage those little pieces until it's in the policy, like, when you bring us the first reading of what you want, you know, just, just so it's clear, you know? So, yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited about this. Joe?
Does this apply to the elementary schools as well?
Oh, yeah, it would be a district policy. I mean, do you have many kids with cell phones?
A handful.
Probably the older age, right?
Issues arise on the bus where they may go to an inappropriate site and cause some disruption on the bus because they're looking at something that's a little risque or worse.
What's our, our policy, does it address, I can't remember off the top of my head, does it address the bus now, or probably not, right?
Well, I thought that the policies applied as soon as they got on the bus, and so.
When they got off the bus.
It says bus trips and school trips.
Does it, okay.
And driver education.
Then there's an exception for athletics and extracurriculars.
Yeah, like the coach sets it or whatever.
Because they call their parents, you know.
Okay, yeah, so, um, yeah, it's a district policy, so, yeah, I would think, right? You guys in agreement that it's.
Yeah, just work together to figure out the wording.
Yeah, so, yeah, so all, all three of you can work together to make sure it works for both buildings and, yeah. Cool. Thank you, Joe. That was, that was a good point, because, yeah, we go see, I know myself, what we're thinking in the middle of high school.
Right.
Not really thinking as much about the elementary, but I guess. Yeah. All right, so were you about to make that motion before we hijacked it?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to give some leeway to, I guess, all the principals and assistant principals, as far as the cell phone policy, so that they can gather information for potential revisions.
Yeah. Second. All right, any more discussion? We already had our discussion. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great, thank you, thank you, guys. I'm excited, I think this would be a good way to start off the year, you know? I think, I think the students are going to be hopefully excited about it. Yeah. And we're stepping like into modern times, like, everybody, you know, that we can't expect them to give me in their lockers, so. All right, any other business? Does anybody have any other business?
No.
We're going to make it.
I've got a list of the non-public stuff I want to make sure I cover, but I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
Someone a list.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Look at how short the public one is, that we did that in anticipation of some longer non-public, sorry. Did I mention there are cookies? I brought. Did I mention there are cookies, I brought cookies.
I already had two.
Okay. All right, so next up, financial report, Jody?
Well, I'm sure you have my report, but in addition to it, I would like to tell you that I did close the fiscal year late last night, or late last year, Thursday afternoon, it felt like last night. And I do have the amount for the unreserved fund balance. It is three hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents, which I feel is a pretty good number, I'm pretty, I'm pretty pleased with it. Normally, at this meeting, I would be asking you to review the DOE twenty-five, and I'm going to be doing an extension for the DOE twenty-five. Our NASCO meeting last Thursday was the one where they reviewed how to do the DOE twenty-five, I've not done it. I did learn what the DOE twenty-five, I learned what the twenty-five stands for, and it's twenty-five pages of data and analysis. So it's, it's going to be a little time-consuming. So I'm going to file the extension for it. The DOE suggested to all of us on the call Thursday that we file the extension. That way, you can look at it at the next month's board meeting and not be frustrated in between to, to do it, but I will try to complete it in a timely manner, nonetheless. One good thing is that I really figured out how to close the year, and we will be doing a lot more things along the way, so it's not as cumbersome at the end. So I've learned a lot, and, and I think that's good. We, you probably also are aware that our staff accountant, Deb Godin, gave her notice, and so that means that I am also trying to learn how to do payroll and learn how to pay bills. So that's taking up a considerable amount of my time. So I apologize for not having the DOE twenty-five, but we have a plan, and next year we'll be back on track.
And the financial, it's worth, because everybody got closed out yesterday, so.
Yeah, and, and so I couldn't, I couldn't run any reports because it would have been garbage because of the numbers part.
Yeah, which is a fairly typical August thing.
Yeah, I, I saw last year's, and it was similar, so.
Yep. Great, does anybody have any questions or comments for Jody? All right, thank you. Uh, curriculum, Karen, you have had a busy summer.
I've been busy, so you have my report, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I also would just like to say thank you for allowing us to take team of teachers on our conference. It was incredibly beneficial, and I think it's going to really make a difference in helping us to move the district forward with professional learning communities, so it was a fabulous trip where we all learned so much, it was a lot of work, but we had some time to have a little fun together, too, and it was nice to take a team across the district. It was the first time that I know of that we've taken a team from K through twelve to all work together for the entire time. So that was just a, a new experience for everybody, and I think we'll see, we'll reap the benefits of that throughout the year. So thank you for allowing us to do that.
If you have any questions or comments for, for Karen?
I will be here for August twenty-third for the new staff orientation on that day. I was not able to get the twenty-ninth off, but I will be here for the twenty-third.
Yes, thank you, anybody would like to join us on the twenty-third or for the twenty-ninth?
Yep, I will be here the twenty-third and the twenty-ninth, so for, for April, I know you're new to the board, so yeah, just let Karen know, if, if you could make, there's, there's a breakfast on the twenty-third and a little orientation, you know, and where, where you would introduce yourself to the new staff and stick around, I mean, you could stick around for as much as you want, Wayne gives a presentation and, you know, whatnot, and as on the twenty-third, then on the twenty-ninth, it's a district day, which is at the elementary school, I think, this year, right? At the, at the gym, and it's, it's a breakfast with the entire district, and you don't need to talk. Usually, at the, the new teacher one, like, a board member will stand up and say, who are you, and how many years have you been on the board? But the district day, you don't have to, it's a bigger thing, but, so, yeah, so anybody just let Karen know if you can make either of those, they're non-new staff, one is at eight, I think, right? And the district one is seven forty-five. Yeah, and the district, the new staff is here, right, the new staff is in Smith's buildings, yeah. So any, any other questions or comments for Karen? Great, and I, I will say, I, I have heard for at least, like, you know, the first few days, like, non-stop about the conference. So it was very, very worthwhile from what I've hearing about it, so, so thank you. All right, technology report, Justin?
Madam Chair, you have my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Justin? No, I hear the summer went very well, I mean, you know, it's in the highway, so thank you, and, and everybody who helped, and I had some other people, you know, Ms. Foster, and I can't remember now, I didn't know.
Ms. Gilmore.
Gilmore, thank you, so that's great, and, and tell Connor that we, we welcome him. And I also wanted to say, in lieu to the conference, too, Justin was, they got, had to get there really early in the morning to catch the bus down, like, two thirty a.m., and Justin was there because all the laptops have been image, was to make sure everyone could sign into their laptop so they could take them to the conference. So Justin was here at two thirty to, to make sure, so thank you, Justin, that's amazing, I heard that, thanks for that shout-out. Because that was really my help. Thank you, Justin. All right. Next up, we have principal reports. We'll start with John, John?
So you have my report in your packet. So really, the transition for the summer has been interesting, learning everything, you know, and hiring of staff has been an extreme challenge. We do have classes covered, not necessarily the way I would love to have them covered, but we do have them covered, and again, focusing on the students. The, the one, the one class right now is chemistry, where we don't have good coverage. We have a plan, either through Belax or East Start for those students. And Matt Azaro, who's been in our new high school counselor, he's learning the ropes, and he's, he's working extremely hard. He's doing, right now, middle and high school schedules. I believe we have ten new registrations coming in, six leaving, so it kind of balances out. But Matt is working extremely hard. And, you know, Chris has been a tremendous help with the transition, and Erica and Kathy, and so I, I'm impressed with, you know, what I've seen. And, you know, this will be a learning year for me, and there'll be some changes next year, for sure, because I think we can make some, some positive changes. And my big focus for this year, because of the conference, is the PLCs, and to have a better focus on, on how to use PLCs for student learning and assessing students. And it was a great conference, the, the folks that we saw were incredible, incredible speakers, and I appreciate you folks allowing me to go. The weather was also awesome, because when I would call home, and my wife would say, it's ninety-some degrees, and I've got my A C on, it's like, oh, it's beautiful here. And it was. You know, sports have started up, I checked some of the practices this evening. And so a lot of good things happening, and the student rep will be the other big piece to get going, but, yeah. I'm excited to see kids and coming, and I'm meeting with parents, some parents who old their kids last year. I'm encouraging them to come back, that's what we're all about, or I feel we should be all about. And so I'm looking forward to those challenges for those folks, but welcoming back in Hinsdale.
Awesome. Do we have any questions or comments for John?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank Erica and Kathy, and thank you, Chris. Like, we knew Chris was going to be, you know, helping out, you know, he was going to jump right in there, we knew you guys would be a good team right off the bat, so we're super excited, so thank you, guys. Yeah, and please thank everybody else who's jumped in and helped out. Awesome. Joe?
Well, thanks, Madam Chair, each of you have my report, but before I entertain any questions, I don't want to forget, I was approached by mother of a former student who has a piano they no longer have space for, and they wanted to donate it to this, she said, you know, to the elementary school, and she says it does need to be tuned. I have not had a chance to talk to Ms. Mahoney about our need. We do have one already on the stage that was donated by a family a few years ago. But my recollection of the policy was that major gifts have to come before the board to accept it, so I wanted to ask about that right now.
Yeah, yeah, that is our, our policy, so would it be for next month or right now? I mean, I would probably need more information, right?
How long, how soon she needed to move it, I didn't want to get into the details, I told her I'd get back to her tomorrow once I brought it up with that one.
What do you think, Wayne, just the logistics?
Well, one thing you can do is move to accept it pending the determination of suitability, which would be whether it's actually can be repaired and tuned in a way that would work, and there's somebody that needs it, so there are a lot of questions. But then if that were the case, you could authorize Joe to accept it.
Somebody, do you have any, anybody have any questions or comments about that? Want to make a motion to that?
I'll make Wayne's suggested motion.
Yeah. Did you get Wayne's wording on that, Maria, or did you need them?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, and did somebody second, I'm sorry?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, great, yeah, if you have any questions, just get with Wayne on it.
I'll check in with her tomorrow, and I'll talk to Ms. Mahoney as soon as she, I think she's back from her trips now, I'll just have a chance to see her. So thank you for that, and any questions on the report?
Any questions for Joe? I have a question, oh, here we go, last, but I was asking because John spoke to the staffing issue, and I know that it's been a struggle for everybody, I wondered how your staffing was looking for those.
So we had another resignation that the board will see tonight. So we have a new opening, and then we also had a resignation that Wayne was able to accept because it was over the summer, and you'll see that in non-public also, but that list right now is accurate, we did hire an English as a second language certified teacher, who will also be working part-time as Title I, so we were able to fill that position, they'll serve both the elementary and middle school.
Cool, all right, great, thank you, Joe. Wayne?
Here, you have my report, I've already talked about the COVID part, and I think you're probably familiar with the legislation, I did a thumbnail sketch quickly of stuff.
Yeah, thank you, that was very helpful, you know, you did a lot of what I was going to do during my N H S B A legislation report, so, thanks a lot.
So you're going to use Wayne's report?
Yeah, that was a, referring to Wayne's report. Any questions for Wayne?
Ken, is it okay if I ask a question that's, I think, a little bit out of what you put in the report?
Yeah.
Is there any, are we still looking at a reduction in the swept, swept taxes for this fiscal year?
So the, that is more several times it was, Senate Bill one forty, which had considerable funding. And now it is a amount of money that will be determined by the commissioner that will go to districts that have financial need, and they'll determine that by property valuation for student buy-in. And probably assessment pieces, but we have not seen the criteria by which to make that call.
I don't think it would be an exception.
So there's probably money coming, but how much, it's not as clear as it was when it was a regional Senate bill.
Yeah, I was following it initially, and then it right happened.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah. And I did speak to a couple lawsuits, and some of that may be kind of in play, because the lawsuits, there's one that was clearly twenty-three, and that's the Fleming Light lawsuit, and there's a new one that where taxpayers in the community are saying, listen, we're paying a lot more than our neighbor taxpayers because state doesn't support education as a result of our town having the needs by which neighborhood does. So it's a two, now it's a two-pronged approach to this issue, so who knows what's happening? That strategic plan.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, Sarah, I know you had given your course for non-public, and you're not on the agenda, but is there anything after sitting here? When you first meet, you'd like to add, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. I can speak to a little bit on what was the reason that was non-public, because there were names, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why, yeah.
But since that, we actually have hired nine, no, ten individuals since I started July fifth. Learning, including, right, which.
Including A P and payroll.
Accountant, that, that went very smoothly, we have two pending individuals that we're looking to add to that, so. But which are already in their staffing plans that they should be most likely approved. We are working on an online applicant tracking system that will be through school spring, Power School, Cal Ed, it's all one big, which will, I hope, to help create some efficiencies and streamline some things and easier communications out for applicants looking passive or not. So there'll be more to come with that.
All right, awesome, thank you, I just didn't want to leave you out, you know, you're listening to everything, so if you're willing to have anything.
Just trying to be a private one over there, and what I could say.
Sorry, yeah, no, that's okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, yes, any questions?
So sorry.
Thank, thank you so much for everything so far.
Yeah, yeah, what, ten, you said, nine, whatever, yeah.
Trying to still learn all the.
Oh, yeah.
Pieces and, who's who?
No, I, I mean, we're in good shape compared to, especially with a lot of other districts, so, you know, we, you guys all have done an amazing job this summer of getting, you know, getting applicants through and finding the right people, so, yeah, thank you all. All right, committee report, reports, personnel committee?
Nothing.
Really, yeah, this will be a lot of nothing because it was the summer.
There'll be nothing all year.
Yeah, health and wellness?
No, we haven't had a meeting yet.
Finance, budget committee, the April, April, I just, as, as reps, we sort of kind of met with Jody and Wayne as the budget reps, but it wasn't, we haven't had a finance committee meeting yet. I have to reach out, I, I do admit, I dropped the ball, and I was due it last week, and it just kind of got, you know, like you said, life happens. I want to reach out to Dennis, because the budget committee did not want to meet in July because some members were away. So they, budget committee will want me to meet and vote on a rep to our new finance committee, so after that happens, I'll, I'll get on that tomorrow, and then we can get another, get a finance committee meeting scheduled along with whoever that person is, and get rolling. Staff development. Legislative, N H S B A, so for the legislative part, refer to Wayne's report, I listed all of them. I just want to draw, just send you to the public, and I don't have, I'm not as, like Jim, where Jim would have every R S, or Senate Bill, blah, blah, the number. I didn't write that down, so I'm not that good at it, but the public comments, R S A, the, the law that just passed on public comments, so we got the sample policy from the N H S B A that, just so we can look at that next month, so we'll want to put that on the September agenda. It does take effect, the law takes effect September sixth, I think, so it'll take effect before our meeting. So I am going to reach out to Will and from the School Board Association and get his take on it. I read it a little closer, and it does say that if nobody, so basically, just so people know, there, a new law passed that you have to have a thirty-minute public comment period at meetings. I'm not, the original law, like, excluded certain meetings, like, board meetings, school board meetings, and public, yeah, but I don't know, but budget committee and school board me, or, school board means what budget committee was excluded, so I'm not sure if the selectmen are under the same thing, or if this was just school board, but anyway. And part of, part of the, of the notes from the N H S B A, I think it was, said that if nobody, like, you don't have thirty minutes at the top, like, nobody there to fill it, they don't want, you can move it to the end of the meeting, but you still, it sounds like you still need to have thirty minutes, you know? So at the end of the meeting, then we would be. So at the end of the meeting, then we would be sitting there.
So then we're just sitting here waiting to see if somebody has a comment from 30 minutes?
It's 30 open minutes.
I read it different, or a little different.
Okay, so that's why I need to get Will's top.
I, I read it that we have to, we have to allow for 30 minutes of, of, if we don't have anybody for 30 minutes, then it's whatever time that we, that we have public comments for.
We can't cut somebody off.
Right, we, right. So we have to allow for 30 minutes.
And you don't have to sit here and.
With my reading of, it's the last time I read it, allow was in the wordage.
Yeah, but so what happens though if, and this is like I said, and I'll find that, find out.
And I think you can split it up again, 15 minutes at the beginning and 15 minutes at the end. You've allowed for 30 minutes of comments.
But if you don't have anybody in the first 15 and you go, okay, nobody's here, let's move on, discussion in our first item. And if somebody shows up.
And then at the end, if that person wanted to speak for 30 minutes, you have to allow them to speak for 30 minutes on my, my.
Okay, because I read it differently. I read it as you need to dedicate 30 minutes in the meeting for whether, you know what I mean? So if somebody shows up in minute 23, like they still have seven more minutes, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I also, but I also read it.
We can, we can.
If you had like a lot of people where you could still set individual.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yes, yes, yes. You can still do that, yes. But, yeah, you can still do that. So it doesn't like, yeah.
Because you can't have 100 people on Zoom each have 30 minutes.
Oh, no, no, no. The period is 30 minutes, but, but yeah, so.
And you can restrict the people talking.
To two minutes or, yeah, exactly.
Basically just however many people you think you're going to talk. I think we allow for like 10 minutes.
We do 10 anyway, but usually if you have people who want to talk, usually.
Right, I know, yeah.
I know one person that.
I mean, we've never not had enough time for people to talk, so.
Yeah, but this is a.
We do need to limit by the person because you could have one person take the whole 30 minutes.
And that's, and that's not fair to everyone else.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we need to give some more guidance, but yeah, it's definitely, if you don't have anybody, you still, and I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can, well, you allow it, but you, but if somebody shows up, you need to have something planned for 30 minutes, whether you.
That's what I'm saying. We did 15 minutes in the beginning.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's in 10.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, it came out, yeah. So, but I will find out for sure.
I think you tend to just sit around for 30 minutes waiting.
No, yeah, I'm awful, yeah, I don't know. I don't know, because there was a lot of hubbub about it when, when it, there was a discussion about it. At the, I think in the delegate assembly, there might have been some discussion. It might have been brewing, but anyway, but I will find out from Will. And, and, you know, and pass that along and that'll be, you know, then it'll come right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. And, oh, and the other thing for NHSBA, sorry, the delegate assembly, speaking of the delegate assembly. It is on Saturday, October 1st at 10:00 AM Concord. So Jim was always, like, I'll be there because I have to be there because I'm on the board. But Jim was generally our delegate every year. So I don't know if any of you are interested in being the delegate. We get one delegate, we could send more people, but one person is the actual delegate to vote. So like I said, it's Saturday, October 1st at 10:00 AM. So, um, and the, we did the proposed resolutions at our, our board meeting in July and I think NHSBA had already sent those out. So if, I'll just make, you know, schedule to Maria, make sure they get in the package for September and then we would just take a vote on it. Our, so then that way, if we do have a delegate that decides to go, they know how to vote because they vote the ones of us. So just think about it and let, let me know. And, and, you know, I can help you get signed up if, if you want to go. And we, you know, I'm going over, so whoever, just go over with me, you know, or not, if you don't want to start fooling with me. But it is, and it's not long. It's 10. It used to be a longer program. I don't think, you know, they're, they're trying to keep it shorter because, you know, after COVID, nobody wants a four-hour presentation in a business meeting. So, cool. Yep, so just let me know that. All right, so then, HAS would have been enough. We haven't had HAS since last time. Selectment, Sean?
I don't know how much of what's been going on with selectmen affects us. Like you just get some, some unanticipated funds for highway stuff and Jill is working on, is still working with FEMA on River Road. So I guess that's progressing, but it's still going to be a while before that's river road is like fixed. But most of the other stuff more affects like me on planning than me on school board.
All right, cool. Thank you. Okay, you, you up again, you're enjoying the facilities.
Yeah, so what I did at the last facilities meeting was I made my notes and sent them to Maria to put in the package. So, so you guys have my notes as far as what we're talking about here. You know, stuff about the security audit is just basically the overview. And then I, most of it does need to be discussed in public and I included the RSA, what it would be covered under, just because, why not? The one thing that we do need some guidance from the board on, we're going to be in need of a new pickup truck. Because the one that we have is still getting old, starting to have issues. So the question to the board is, how do you want to go about doing that? We discussed putting in the budget. We discussed doing a vehicle expendable trust. We discussed putting it on the warrant and we talked about the pluses and minuses of each of those. And I said I would bring it back to the board to see what you guys want to do. I also was supposed to talk to Jill to see if, to see if there was any interest or possibility inter-departments with the town to see if any kind of vehicle swap would be feasible. I just haven't had a chance to have that conversation with her yet because we work on a bunch of other stuff. So what does the board want to do with vehicles?
Thoughts? Wayne, Jody, you know, any input?
They're part of the ones that were like, we could do this, we could do this. And Chris, we all, we're all like, this is a plus and a minus, this is a plus and a minus.
So the facilities committee does not have a recommendation.
No, we are asking you what you want, what your thoughts are.
As, okay, so you don't have recommendations for facilities. What's your thought as a board member?
My thoughts, okay, so I don't know if my thoughts for board member are, would sway anybody.
No, I'm just asking. Everybody has input, but you know.
My thoughts, and I know not everybody likes expendable trust, but I do personally like expendable trust. You know, we're looking at a pickup truck right now, but at some point, you know, ELO vans don't last forever, right? The vehicles don't last forever. If we put, if we make a vehicle expendable trust, all right, we have to take the creation of the trust at town meeting. The town has to, townspeople can say, yeah, you can have this trust or no, you can't, right? So it's transparent there and the townspeople get to tell us what their preference is, right? As far as the trust. When you put money into the trust, it's the same thing. We have to take it to the townspeople, all right? And then when we expend out of the trust, again, we have to take it to the townspeople. So to me, that's the most efficient. It's the most transparent. You can put, you know, money in there over time so that if, when we do have to replace a vehicle, it's not one big hit. You know, we're doing a little bit at a time and then getting it there. To me, that's what I like best, but that's not what everyone likes best. So it's.
So how have we done it in the past? I assume this isn't our first truck.
Well.
Theoretically.
In the past, we have done a couple different things. In the past, we budgeted for it. In the past, we've also got a the absolute incorrect way.
Yeah, well, so we shouldn't do it.
Right.
So in the past, we put it in the budget for the next following year, basically, to buy a truck.
Essentially.
But during the expendable trust, you can vote to do, you know.
You can spread out that.
Is the truck going to last now?
Well, that's a good question. Since, since we met, the truck broke down. Sean went to go get some paint in Brattleboro. The truck broke down. We had to have it towed back and it was a couple thousand dollars to repair it. So.
Can the mechanic give you an estimate on how long that repair lasts?
No, they didn't. But, you know, my, my hope, and maybe it's a hope against hope, is that that will be enough to keep it for a while. I, I would hope not to have to replace it in the near term. It's just something that we need to begin thinking about.
So if we do the expendable trust, generally those accrue money over years.
Right.
So.
So, so the, so the first, the first money into it would probably have to be.
Not at that truck.
Years, you could just, you know, smaller chunks for.
And are we buying or leasing a new truck?
Right, that's all. I don't think leasing is a good idea.
If I don't need a facility truck, that's why I'm asking.
I'm not a big, I'm not a big lease person anyway, but I think the facilities truck is going to get a lot more.
So it sounds like for this first, to, to me personally, for this first time, it sounds like we should be, we should have a warrant article to, to buy a truck. And then in the future, we should set up a expendable trust fund that we can put like for repairs and buy our, our replacement as needed, you know, as we need to use that money for whatever, for truck maintenance or.
And ELO.
Right, yeah, so like that kind of thing, it should have its own expendable trust. So I think personally, I think if we need to buy, that doesn't sound like the truck's going to last like three or four years or however, you know, I don't know, but like, you know, whatever money we're going to, in an expendable trust. So I think we should ask for, we should do a warrant article for the initial replacement of the truck.
To get it, you know, to get it.
And if we went that route, my suggestion would be to do the warrant one year and then the expendable trust another.
Right, that's my suggestion.
Don't, don't ask to set, don't ask for money for this and then money to set this up all at the same time. That's not, that's too much.
Because we want to set it up right. So we, we do this warrant article for the replacement of the truck. And then we, next year, set up for expendable trust for maintenance on vehicles and when door replacement as needed. Then we can slowly build up that versus like putting $30,000 in expendable trust. You know, in one year, we can put, you know, five or $10,000 into expendable trust each year and then build it up.
And, and we're not looking for, you know, a truck with any bells and whistles. We just.
Need something that works.
Something basic.
Right. Right.
It doesn't need to do a lot, just something basic.
Yeah, we don't need all the bells and whistles.
And if you.
That's my suggestion.
Maybe move if, if the town has something that they can share with us.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know, and like I said, I had hoped to have that conversation with Jill by now, but I just haven't. I'm just to talk with some of the other things.
And Julia or Jim?
I agree that it's a, should be a warrant issue regardless. I, we had some discussions about, we were getting our budget together last year, that there have been some requests to do more of this kind of purchase. Or as a warrant article, it comes across as a bit more transparent, which I think the community appreciates. So I would suggest definitely that it needs to be a warrant article. It sounds like the concern is, you know, is it going to live until next July? And what, what are the options in terms of that? Because, so, but I, I, for transparency and for some of the conversations we've recently had, I think, where are those appropriate for the replacement?
And I'm, i- even though I, you know, like the expendable trust, I found the warrant.
I don't, right, right, for the first year.
And then the second year, expendable.
Is a really good idea. So we don't have this issue again.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Because right now, our maintenance is coming out of the facilities budget, I'm assuming, correct?
Right.
Which is set up for facilities, not so much the trucks.
Right. I mean, it does have it, it does have it.
I mean, I know it does. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I know it's in there, but if we can, if you get another way to move that into something else too.
Right, we may need it for oil, so.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with it, the first year of the warrant article, because when you said about the, you know, your first choice is a trust, well, if we go to, in March with a trust and it gets, and it gets, and it fails, then, then what?
It's tough, it'd be tough for a year now knowing that it broke down just recently, because that, that's new. So, so what I'm hearing is warrant and if that's the case, then facilities, you know, come budget time, we'll have a recommendation for a warrant. Is that all right?
Yeah. Do you feel we need a motion for that, Wayne? I mean, I think it's just a steal. So that we can direct the facilities committee to our, that's a warrant article. Yeah, someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so did you get what the motion is to?
Direct the facilities to put together a warrant for the first year for the truck.
Replacement of the truck.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Yeah, I have a question for Sean.
Yep.
Because a tax payer approached me and wanted to know, so they saw the soccer fence was removed and would like to know what the plan is for the soccer. Is there going to be a replacement fence and what's happening?
So for right this second, the last conversation that we had was that we were gonna wait and see what happens with the field as far as if anybody starts trying to drive on it with ATVs or whatever. If that's the case, then go with the fence. But right now, fencing is super expensive.
I understand. I just didn't know if there was any, if anybody had even investigated, like what kind of fence.
So he looked at the chain link and when we had the conversation, was it seven, seven years ago?
It's right before Wayne got here, so yeah.
Yeah, right before Wayne got here and, and I was like, no, 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 keep the wooden fence. And the chain link would have been like $25,000.
And Gina was the only former member that was like.
Saying that's ridiculous, just get the chain link fence. You know, so, so Gina was the one right person there because now chain link is a few times.
It's on the record.
You know, Sean led that charge.
See how it goes. See if anybody tries to run the ATVs and then, okay, great.
Could I please make a note on the fence? Just from a safety standpoint, we did a reverse egress drill this past school year and the fence that was in place had one opening along the entire front side. So trying to get entire school through one opening caused a major choke point. If that becomes an issue, could we have more of those?
Sure. Can we make a note, Jody, in the facility stuff that if and when we do look at a fence, that we want to take Chris's concern into account?
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you, Chris.
That's actually a really good point. So by the way, I'm going to say this later, but Chris did a really good job. When we were doing the whole safety audit and stuff like that, he was like right on top of like every night. But that's coming up, preview.
All right, so we had a motion to, for the warrant article, motion this second. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Great, thank you. Is that all for facilities?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
There'll be more for non-public, but that's it for.
Community connections, April?
Uh, I would like to make a post about the application and I've gotten the packet. I'm assuming it's open. The free and reduced, free and deuce.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
And mention that I, packets are out.
Packages are out and we are, we are ready to make it.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've been, you know, making some posts throughout the summer, post about job openings and whatnot and different things. So, and it's, and it's pretty good reach. I mean, I, at least I think it is a good reach. Like they were getting, you know, we're getting like 150, 160, 65 people seeing it at least. So hopefully that helped out a little bit.
And, and the free reduced application is, is, is so much more than just free meal, just free meals for children. It brings so much to our school in terms of dollars and aid.
The DOE has some graphics out there. I know you've, I know we've seen them in the past about it's so much more. It ties into stuff. So we could do some of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Everybody should, I just want to get the word out.
Everybody should buy.
Awesome, thank you. So tuition committee, Wayne, we put this, kept this on this past year, just, I mean, we weren't, haven't been doing it, you know, during COVID. Do you think we, and we can leave it on obviously for this month, but maybe something to think about if we really want to keep that on, because I don't, I don't see us.
We are growing as a district, so the need that we had then is, that's apparent. Maybe we put it on hold, but if we do have a defining enrollment time, we can bring it back up. The Winchester is in a agreement with Keene, I think through 2026, as is Chesterfield. And so as far as that's.
That sort of thing, yeah, but even just, this would, yeah, tuition agreement, yeah. So, so maybe for next month, if, what do you guys think? Are you okay with that? We just can just take it off and. Yeah. All right, so Maria, if you could take that one off next month, the number 10, the tuition committee. Awesome. All right, behavior support.
We have a meeting on the 13th of September.
Awesome, thank you. And joint loss?
I haven't heard anything.
All right, so citizen comments, we'll start in the room. So, so there are these citizen comments.
So we are here. My name is Casey Gerzow. Nice to meet you. We came this night. I had spoke briefly with Maria. Me and my two daughters, Kaylee and Evelyn, just moved to Ashville at the first of this month. With my husband Bob, I'm sure you all know.
Yeah, we know Bob.
Yeah.
With that moving to Ashville, I really do not want to put Evelyn into the Winchester school. Kaylee will, but I'm sure she's going to Keene High School. So I would, I'm requesting to have her come to Hensale and obviously to pay. and obviously to pay whatever the tuition cost is to have her come into the Hensdale school system. We came from Grandpa, which I don't know if anybody are aware, but they were just given a blue ribbon. You know, we're, we're looking for a school of the same caliber. I really want to set my children up for success and I don't find that in the Winchester school system, I mean, no disrespect for any of that. It's just, I did write, I have a whole letter, which Maria has a copy of, like.
Yeah, I think we have it for the non-public, so yeah, so we'll, that's, we'll discuss it and.
Yeah, I just wanted an opportunity to introduce ourselves and kind of what my, my major points were and it's pretty old, so to meet Evelyn. And I understand that there's some difficulties with schooling and stuff right now and staffing and all of that, but I really want to be able to give her the best future. And a point I did want to make that's not in my letter, is that when I came to, to Hensdale originally, I was a police sergeant. And so that was obviously past the way in the schools and there's always an officer often be 24/7 at Hensdale. That's not the case in Winchester and I hate to have to bring it up, but if there was ever an incident, she's a lot safer here than she would be there. So, just thank you all.
Yeah, thank, thank you for, you know, coming to the meeting and yeah, like I said, it's a non-public, so.
Yes, no, I just wanted to say my case, you all knew at least who it was coming from.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
What, what grade is Evelyn in?
She'll be going into fifth grade.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Maria, if you want to do the Zoom people and.
Donna, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. iPhone, do you have any comments or questions? And Teresa, Dioria, do you have any comments or questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, so I just need a motion to go into non-public?
Motion made.
Second, roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
My, thank you, my, yeah.
I know, the whole media.
And then it's Maria, if you can stop it. And what, you're taking people out?